Okay, well, I call it to order this November the 30th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Here.
Commissioner Renaud?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Okay, if you all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Charles Adams of the Faith Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Almighty God, you have given us this good land as a gift from you. Grant that we remember your generosity and seek your will. Bless our land with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Grant that we may become a united people. Support us in defending our liberties and give to those whom you have entrusted the authority of government the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, may our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times, do not let our trust in you fail through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Okay, it takes us to correspondence and organizational business. We're going to receive a quarterly update from the Franklin County Development Council. James?
Morning, Commissioners. It's that time of year again for another quarterly update from FCDC. Get this pulled up here. So just to start out and give you an update on the lead activity that's been coming in, now, just keep in mind, these numbers are from April 18th, when I actually started in this position until now, just because we didn't have much tracking in place while there was an interim director here. So since April 18th, we've had 13 total leads that have come down the pipeline to us. Nine of those have been manufacturing, three of those have been hospitality, and then one has been other, which I would classify as an office project. Of those 13 total leads, we do have nine losses and four what I would still consider pending. Either we're still working with them, or we haven't heard one way or another whether, you know, we've made the shortlist or not. So most of the losses, and the reasons for most of the losses is just not having an appropriate site to be able to submit to our partners for consideration. Could be things that, you know, they were looking for a rail-serve site with an existing building on it. You know, maybe the land that we have isn't zoned appropriately for the type of operation that it would be, things of that nature. So that's where most of those have come in. Obviously, a lot of that will be alleviated as the new industrial park comes online, which we know we're working towards. So, leading up to, actually, the election in November, there was actually a period where we didn't receive hardly any leads at all. In fact, I've seen more leads come, you know, down to us in the last two weeks than I have in the last three months. And so part of that was just seeing how the election was going to turn out, and so we should see some more activity as far as the number of leads that are coming down the pipeline for us to be able to hopefully submit sites for. Transitioning into the Rock Creek marketing, as you guys know, FCDC was put in charge of the marketing aspects for the new industrial park south of Ottawa there. We went out and we've contracted with Bartlett and West and PEC to assist in those marketing efforts. They bring quite a few things to the table that's going to help FCDC be successful when it comes to this. You know, the first thing that they're going to be able to do is bring a level of expertise when it comes to market research. Obviously, there's been already some target markets, you know, kind of pointed out a while back of, these are the type of industries that we would like to target. From my understanding, there wasn't, you know, a ton of actual data put behind, you know, why we decided to go the way that we did. And so they're able to actually show us those numbers. You know, we want to basically identify target markets that not only have a larger piece of the pie, but also are experiencing a higher level of growth. You know, there are industries out there that are, you know, experiencing considerable growth, but, you know, when you look at the pie and you look at all the industries out there, they may only account for 1% to 2% of it. You know, we would like to find something like the, you know, warehouse and distribution, the manufacturing, things that not only have a larger slice of the pie, but are actually growing at an exponential rate as well, too. We're in the process of completing the marketing plan currently. We do plan on having that completed and approved by, well, we plan to have the plan completed by the end of December, approved at the first meeting in January. And the plan is going to consist of four major components when it comes to the business park. One is going to be awareness and lead generation. That's right, that's what we're doing right now. A lot of it is, you know, working with our partners at the Kansas City Area Development Council, working with our partners at Kansas City Smartport, the Kansas Department of Commerce. That's where a lot of our lead generation comes through right now. When they get projects, they start working on, they send those leads out to us, and then, you know, if we have sites that are appropriate, we can go ahead and submit them and work with them to try and stay in consideration for that. So that's going to be one major component. Continue to work with them and strengthen our relationships with those partners to make sure that we're always going to be in the game when these projects come down. The next is going to be digital and creative assets. This is a pretty important one, because when it comes to site selectors, real estate professionals, you know, companies that just may do their due diligence on their own without hiring a third party, they do 80% of their research on a region online before they ever pick up a phone and call somebody from the region or drop somebody an email. At that point, they are looking for really any reason to eliminate you, because they want to whittle that list down to the smallest number of sites possible before they really start digging in and start taking site visits and getting specific sites submitted to them. So a big portion of this is going to be creating those digital and creative assets to really frame, you know, not just the new industrial park, but Franklin County as a whole, as a place that is good for business development and is good for, you know, just business climate in general. And so some of those things that we will be using and taking advantage of is Location One Information System. That's one thing that we do use currently. Another one is called Statebook. And the easiest way that I can describe Statebook is, it's basically Facebook for site selectors. They can go into Statebook and they can say, "We're looking for 100 acres within five miles of a major interstate that has, you know, these type of utilities to it," and they can just put in all these filters, and then it'll pull up what, you know, parcels of land meet those requirements. And so that is something that we will also be taking advantage of as well. The third component is going to be convention and trade show attendance. That is exactly what it sounds like. It's when we go to conventions that site selectors may be at. It's when we go to trade shows and have a booth, you know, to kind of highlight the things that we have available in this county. That's going to be a big portion of this, of this, you know, program. It's going to be a big portion of this plan. When it comes to site selection, the personal relationships play a key role when it comes to economic development. I was at a conference a few months ago where I got to sit in and listen to site selectors talk about different issues and different topics, and one of the site selectors said that, you know, personal relationships are the key. She said, when she gets a project lead that she's working on, she'll obviously send it out to her email list. But if she has a personal relationship with you and she knows you, she'll pick up the phone and call you to make sure that you got it, make sure that you see what's there and see if you have anything that might fit. And so really, that's where the convention and trade show comes in, is to build those relationships with some of the key players in the industry to make sure that we're noticed. And then the last one is sales meetings and calls. And this is, you know, what everybody wants to see. This is getting people into the community, coming for a site visit, coming to meet with members of the community to talk about, you know, the other quality of life aspects that could affect whether or not they want to decide who, you know, locate or relocate their business here. And so this plan is going to be framed as a three-to-five-year plan. It is going to be something that we're going to build on each and every year. We're not going to be able to do everything we want to do in year one, just because it will take, you know, time and resources to build to that level that we want to be at. But we just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, because this is, you know, not going to be something where, you know, we come in and we do something for 2017 and maybe people don't feel like the results are there like they should be, and they want to scrap it and try something else. This is going to be a building process, and it is going to be a three-to-five-year process. So we're looking at the big picture. And then, like I said, the plan execution will start at the beginning of 2017. We will have the plan finalized by the end of December and ready for hopefully approval at the first meeting in January. When we're talking about the new business park, one thing that we also have to address is the workforce concerns that we have throughout the county. It is something that is not exclusive to Franklin County. It is something that is an issue not only statewide, but nationwide. Workforce is tight all over the place. We had a presentation in our last meeting from Chris Gutierrez, President of Casey Smartport, and he said that recently, he's seen companies dive into workforce like he's never seen them dive into workforce before, as far as doing their homework ahead of time. Obviously, when you have projects like Amazon coming into the region, that's going to make a tight workforce even tighter. But he referenced a project that they've been working on that was going to bring several hundred employees to the region, and he said that when they were doing their homework, they were calling companies that had five or six employees and, you know, interviewing them about the issues that they're facing when it comes to employment. And so they're leaving no stone unturned when it comes to that, and it's something that we need to be cognizant of as well. And so we know that we've got some issues that we need to address, and that's something that FCDC's been putting a focus on. Back to the site selector panel I was able to sit in on a couple of months ago, one of the exact quotes from one of the site selectors is, whoever can solve the workforce issue is going to win the game when it comes to business attraction, because it's that big of an issue nationwide. And so one of the things that we've actually done is, we've actually engaged with the De Bruus Foundation out of Kansas City. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background on the connection, the De Bruus Companies, overall, they are the company that owns ATC Truck Covers out in the North Industrial Park. And that's how we got connected to them through their connections. ATC, obviously, having some issues with workforce as they kind of started talking to other business partners within the community, they were finding that those issues were all over the place. And so we've partnered up. FCDC has, you know, collected basically representation from within the entire county. We've got representation from FCDC, from the city, from Ransom Memorial, from ATC Truck Covers, from Calmar, USD 290, Neosho County Community College, OU, and ECAN was the representatives at our first three meetings that we've had with them. And basically, we've been working towards a tangible plan to address workforce development, workforce issues within the county. This is something that FCDC wants to focus their next level campaign on, and we know to be able to go out and sell this to our partners, we have to have something tangible to say, "These are the things that we're going to do to try and address these problems." We know that there's not one silver bullet. We know that it's going to probably take several things, and we're not even going to be able to address all the issues that there are. But if we can at least pick out the top two or three issues that is affecting workforce, whether it be, you know, soft skills training, maybe it's, you know, childcare issues, or healthcare issues, or sick childcare issues. Maybe it's, you know, training for the management level of the companies, you know, training them how to relate to a younger workforce that, you know, is coming out of school. Those are the things that we're diving into. We are expanding the group a little bit as we get further in the talks, bringing in the chamber, bringing in other representation to talk about some of the quality of life aspects here in town, you know, to see if those are things that are affecting it. But we've had three meetings with them already, and we have a standing meeting that we're going to be meeting with them once a month for at least the, right now, I think we have it scheduled out for the next six months, to work together and put forth a tangible plan when it comes to workforce development, because we know that this is most likely the most important piece to the puzzle when you look at the overall development of the county and specifically the new industrial park. If there are workforce concerns and you can't get companies to locate here because they don't feel like they can find the employees, that's a lot of money that's sitting in the ground out there. So we want to make sure that we're hitting this head-on and doing everything that we can to be able to at least show the prospects when they're coming in, that we know that this is an issue that we're taking seriously, and we're trying to find a solution for it.
James?
Yes.
What's considered a workforce distance from this site that you would use those numbers? I mean, is people living in Gardner or Latha, or how far do they use realistic mileage figures for your workforce to come?
You know, we've looked at that a couple of different ways. We haven't really set on an actual, specific hard line as far as, we're only going to look at a 20-mile radius or 30-mile radius. We do know that we have people that drive in from southwest Johnson County. We do know that we have people that drive in from Lawrence, from Topeka, even as far away as Emporia. And so those are all things that we're looking at.
Well, obviously, the pay for the job dictates how far I'm going to drive-
Right.
-or move or relocate.
Right.
But with a new highway to Lawrence, the road we have to Kansas City is obviously people coming from the east. Two things, number one, you're going with, not, you don't have all the traffic factors, because they're going the opposite direction-
Right.
-and you've got the sun at your back. People don't think of that, but sun is a big deal for a lot of drivers. And so I can see how our workforce, potentially, for a good employer, would certainly go beyond the bounds, you know, of Franklin County and to wherever. I just don't know what's realistic.
Right. No, and you're absolutely right. And some of the things that we've actually found is, you know, yes, some of the things are related to pay, the rate of pay that they're getting, you know, are they going to drive in from Lawrence or from Topeka, you know, for a certain amount of pay?
Or quit driving to a job now.
Right, exactly. The other thing that we've found, too, is for some of the workforce, and now every industry is a little bit different, it comes down to more quality of life aspects. You know, some of the feedback that we got from the hospital is, they actually have a large number of employees that drive down from Lawrence every day. And, you know, it's, you know, the Highway 59 is kind of a blessing and a curse that it's four lanes. It's so easy for them to get down from Lawrence, they can just burn that up, you know, there and back every day. But, you know, they want to live, you know, in an area where, you know, they have some of those things, like, you know, Mass Street and some of the culture, you know, arts and culture-type things, you know, they've got, you know, their art festival on Fridays once a month and things of that nature. And so to a younger workforce, the millennial workforce, as they call it, those are the things that are important to them, pays surprisingly not towards the top of that list. And so, you know, it's, these discussions have been all-encompassing, and that's what we're working on. Next, I just wanted to talk on, for a quick second, about the Franklin County Day on the Job. We just had that a couple of weeks ago, back on November 10th. We had approximately 180 students participate in that. Our 2016 sponsors included American Eagle, the Ottawa Co-op, Neosho County Community College, Ottawa University, and McDonald's. We are, we did have a good program this year. We had good feedback from the students, but we are at a point where we are discussing some changes to next year's format. Two of the biggest ones that we're looking at involve, one, whether or not we feel the program would be more effective if juniors participated in it instead of seniors. If that happens, there's going to be one year where there's going to be a big transition, because you're going to have to double up and have both juniors and seniors, so one class doesn't miss out on it. That's the first thing that we need to decide. And then, second, once we figure out whether we're going to keep it seniors or juniors, start working with the other school districts within the county to bring them into the fold if they choose to. You know, if Wellsville and Central Heights wants to be a part of it, West Franklin's already a part of it. And so those are the two things that are going to be discussed as potential changes to Day on the Job moving forward. But as a whole, it seems like the program for that day seems to work really well, and we get good feedback as far as that goes. FCDC does have a board retreat coming up in January. It's been two years since the last full board retreat that we've had. We feel that probably every two years is a good amount of time, plus with me being on the job now, not being here for the last one, we've got some new board members coming in. We felt it was a good time. And just to kind of reiterate a little bit, looking back at the 2015 board priorities that the board had come up with, they've actually accomplished most of those. You know, they wanted to facilitate a conversation regarding a local workforce development plan, which we're currently doing with the De Bruus Foundation. They wanted to assist the city and the county with the business park infrastructure build-out plan, which we're currently in the process of. We wanted to assist the city and the county with selection of a third-party marketing development firm for the new business park, which we've done, provide educational support to the economic development sales tax. So there's a lot of things that they had laid out two years ago that have been accomplished. So we feel that this is a good time to, you know, kind of, you know, look back, see what we've accomplished, see what works well, and really lay out what our top priorities are going to be for the next couple of years from an FCDC standpoint. And then this is just some of the upcoming stuff that we have, that I have going, obviously, today, the county update. December 5th, I'll be giving updates to both the Pomona and Williamsburg City Council. On December 14th, we have our next meeting with the De Bruus Foundation, and then also on the 14th, we've got an event with Kansas City Smartport to network with some site selectors and things of that nature. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any one on public comment? Okay, it takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. What the gentleman just stated here, I'm glad to at least know that they're getting more people interested in the industrial park. But I want to tell you what, since you haven't had a meeting for quite a while, and I have people in Kansas City that know me from where I worked at Allied Signal, some of them have moved to companies. And so they know my phone number, and they've called me. They want to know what is with this property down here that they get rumors up there in Kansas City, and I didn't even know that these guys worked there. And I said, "Well, in reference to what?" He said, "The floodplain." I said, "Well, that's one of the issues that I'm not too keen on, because I don't think, I'm convinced that it will work yet." And then the other thing he was concerned about was, "Is it shovel-ready?" I said, "No, no way yet. No way." So that discouraged him a lot. I said, "If you want to find out more stuff about it," I said, "I would suggest that you contact the Chamber of Commerce here in Ottawa. They'll give you more details and tell you more about it." But I said, "My feelings of it is, it's not shovel-ready." And I, and you know, I said, "The commissioners want something that's at least $21 an hour. They also want no places in there that would bring in something like, that it would stink up the area and other things." So I said, "You have to," and that's why I asked, "Tell you that you need to contact the Chamber of Commerce." Now, that's it for on that subject. Can't wait now to tell the Republican Party now puts in a commissioner for the 4th District. I think that it's overdue, and I hope that they'll have their applications hopefully by tomorrow, and we'll get to start to see who has put in for the position. And I'm sure that whoever it is from that district will do the job, what it's supposed to be done, and represent those people in that 4th District. The third item is in Pomona. Pomona has, is destroying the city of our town. The city is. And I've, we've had encounters with people and myself on the streets. It's still a problem issue, and it's brought police into town, and I've talked to Jeff again, but one of the sheriff deputies that came out there did not do what he told us, a member of our people in the city, of destroying the streets. And so Jim Hague, I went to see Jim Hague because we told him to go see Jim Hague, why they're tearing it up. And so I found out then investigating that the officer did not go see Jim. And I showed Jim the pictures of what they're doing to the streets, and he agreed. He said, "They have no business doing that." And so our concern, more and more of us, is what they're doing, and we're going to address it more on the 5th at their meeting. But when they don't follow through on what our complaints are, the whole town's going to come. And the other thing is with this, too, is as I told the chairman here, since he's from Williamsburg, that now West Franklin wants to do a bond issue of anything to try and do again after four or five years ago that failed badly, and now here they come again. And they're wanting more of what they're claiming is a maintenance bond, but it's not. It's the same old things. They don't want to do, take care of our elementaries, and so, and the windows need to be put at Williamsburg. That's just some of the issues. And then they want air conditioning for their gym and all that. Now, that's just some of the issues going on since you've had your last meeting. That's about all I got at this point. I will [inaudible] else here after a while. Thank you.
Anyone else on the, just? Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda. Items today that need to be considered and approved on the consent agenda are the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for November the 2nd, 2016, and commission meeting minutes for November the 9th, 2016. There are no tax change orders. There are two claim vouchers, one in the amount of $619,169.22, and the other one is in the amount of $173,621.63. Also need to consider and approve the payroll for the period of October the 21st, 2016, through November the 20th, 2016, and 2016's longevity pay, and those are in the amount of $1,138,122.50, and the other one is $141,956.22. Also need to consider and approve invoice number 730058968 for professional services rendered from Bartlett and West related to the Rock Creek Park and- rendered from Bartlett and West related to the Rock Creek Park infrastructure design, and it is in the amount of, I gotta hear somewhere, $287,400. If there's no questions on this, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, move. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, Jim.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, it takes us to items of business. Our first item of business is approval of rezoning application 1609-1425 to rezone approximately 14.03 acres from an A1 agriculture to a RE residential estate zoning district. Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've indicated, this is a request to rezone a little over 14 acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to the RE residential estate. The purpose for this is for the sale of this 14-plus acres to an employee of the, Mr. Vickers, to build a new residence. We have reviewed the proposed land division along with the request for the rezoning, and the planning commission, after reviewing this, found that it did comply with the requirements of our zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and our comprehensive plan, and therefore have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezoning request and to amend the county official zoning map accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Questions?
So, this tract is actually on Utah and not on K-68?
Right.
On the south corner.
It's down on the southeast corner of that approximately 160-acre tract that runs out onto Utah. Shown on the survey, I think that's attached as a part of your staff report.
If there's no more questions, we'll look for a motion to approve the rezoning application 1609-1425. So, move. Second motion, and a second, Jim.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Larry, what district is that, do you know?
That's France.
That's in six, okay.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, second item of business, we consider approving a bid for mold remediation services at the Franklin County Courthouse. Eric?
Yes, Commissioner, you'll recall discussing over the course of several meetings the presence of mold at the old courthouse. Back, most recently on October 5th, you authorized staff to issue RFPs for remediation services. We did that, we got two bids back. One of them did not meet the requirements of the RFP, so we're led with the bid that's in front of you. I've got Midge and Paul here to discuss any questions you might have. They have handled this in my absence, and frankly, have done an excellent job. Since October 5th, we've taken several steps to help the situation in the courthouse. Paul and his staff have cleaned, we've put air scrubbers in there, and the feedback we're getting is that the conditions are a lot better. Having said that, Paul and his staff can only do so much, and so, talking with Midge, talking with Paul, as well as the staff in the courthouse, we believe that remediation services are still needed, so if you have any specific questions about the bid, I'll need you to answer.
And this bid was for the amount of?
$17,500. And it's my understanding that the services can be done over the course of five days, largely after hours, so I don't believe operations should...
Was there a meeting then where they came in and met with our people and whatever and turned that, that correct, Midge? Okay, Paul, yeah.
Paul gave a tour to everybody who was interested in...
Yeah, Paul, let's go up here, too, yeah.
In the bid process, and took them around to show them what needed done and what was included in the, in what we were requesting to be completed. And I think there were, yeah, five companies.
Five companies, did, yeah.
Well, this company is obviously out of state, but they're hiring contractors here. Were any of those people involved in that date, whatever?
There wasn't any that I was aware of, no.
Okay.
Why did only, out of the five that looked at it, why did only two handed bids? Any idea?
I don't, I was quite curious myself. We had another one that turned in, but it was late, you know, it didn't meet the deadline either, so...
Yeah, I don't know either. You know, some of the, some of the issue was regarding some of the paper and the books that were stored in the storage rooms that are pretty tedious to clean, whether that impacted some of, because that was, at least in our review of the courthouse, that's probably the biggest reason. Once the ventilation's taken care of those, that all that paper and things that were stored are the biggest cause of the mold issue. It's not what you would maybe typically see in a mold situation where you had a lot of structural board damage, wall damage, those kinds of things. So, whether that had anything to play with it, I mean, you know, I'm just guessing, but...
We're not required to take this bid just because it's the only bid. It's my question, you've two been on this from the start, how do you feel about the $17,500? Do you, where do you feel, feel that's high, low, in line?
I feel it's very fair. I was, my anticipation was higher than that.
I don't have a good, you know, a good way to judge because I haven't seen enough bids for mold remediation, so, you know, I'm just, for costs, I'm just kind of guessing in the wind there. I do think it's important that it's done correctly, and that always ups the price. I mean, if we just wanted to go clean something, that would be a lot less expensive. But, when you're really talking about true remediation and doing it correctly and following all the recommendations and procedures, I mean, it is going to up the price. So, I think at this point, one of the important things for staff and for us is to just get this done and get it moved on, get the air fully cleaned and people comfortable is worth quite a bit right there.
This is definitely a lot less than we were looking at when this situation first arose down there, so, we're looking at way more than that, but so...
Personally, some of that is a testament to the work that these people put in.
True, true.
Certainly, I appreciate that.
Any more questions on this?
Do you feel like there's a one-time effort and our problem solved?
I think so. I would like to, hopefully, do their job accordingly, and we could be done with it.
One of the things I did notice when we've been cleaning out a couple, there were two storage rooms that were the highest levels of mold. It was in the storage rooms, not the offices that were the highest. And one of the things is we've been going through and cleaning all that out that I've noticed is that the ventilate, that the vents were covered up because people just thrown things in front of some of the vents, so even, so that just contributed significantly to those particular areas becoming contaminated, if you will. And with that cleaned out and taken care of, and the ventilation system working correctly, should not see a problem.
Chair, you have a public comment on this item.
Okay. Gene?
Just remember, Gene, the same rules are still in effect from the public comment part of it. I understand. Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. Well, I know what was out on the internet on this when it first started, 300 pictures, and I believe that Midge and him, I think, probably have done a good job. I won't say anything about that part, but there's some things here that aren't, haven't been answered. And even in the internet today of what was all done here and so forth, is concerns of me that I would like to have some answers to this because this, this may happen again. If that equipment in that, in that courthouse has not been changed or deterred this from happening again, it will occur again. And that company who put that in there's got to assure somebody that that's not going to bring that mold back in there. That's the first one. The second one is the elevators. Back then, when they first started about this, all four elevators were worried of some about mold, and the elevators are in the back of them. Now, today, when the internet, when I looked at this, they're only talking about one elevator up on the third floor, but it's not in an elevator, it's out front in the lobby. Now, what about the other elevators in there? Are they okay? Are they all right? Because when we had that forum here for the candidates for the election, there was several, the heads were here, and I talked to them, and they said they're worried because it will happen again, or if they don't get to the other areas that have been mentioned. Now, that's what I'm concerned about, and about the protective stuff they got to wear to do this. You know, it's $17,000, but when you've got to protect the people that work in there, nothing can compare to that. Because I worked in a plant that way, and a lot of those people aren't here no more because they died of lung disease and so forth. So, that's my concern of some of the questions that's not been addressed on today's internet of what this outfit's going to do and so forth, and the equipment that's already still in the courthouse. So, those are my, those are my concerns, and those people have to be protected to the fullest. They work there every day, and that's my concern for them, just like I would be for anybody else in any plant where I worked at or anything, because I've seen the hurt. And I just hope that they, you do it all the right way. And hopefully, this company will do the standards they're supposed to do for this $17,000. Because I wonder if there is somebody else out there that would give a proper bid on this, because if the elevators and everything's all okay per what they, what they say, then maybe that's a little bit too much. But, again, price does, does not matter when you're talking about people's lives. Thank you.
Any more questions on this?
Do you want to address any of those, Midge?
I can, just to give you a rundown of some of the things that have taken place and taken place early on. The county purchased two air scrubbers, big air scrubbers, as you probably well know, that have been placed in the courthouse, and Paul and his crew have put those in places where there was a little more contamination to make sure that staff is taken care of. Staff was, provided any protective equipment if they chose to wear it. But, after the air scrubbers, then the issue with the ventilation system, and Paul can explain that more, but was basically the tilt of the pan, of the drip pan that wasn't allowing the water to, you know, in the high humidity summer, wasn't allowing the water to escape from the ventilation system. So, those have been tilted correctly so that any humidity, any water that comes out of the ventilation system is draining properly. So, those, as Paul and his crew have gone through the initial offices on the first floor that were not highly contaminated, there was a little bit of mold, no more than you might see outside, but as they've cleaned, they've, they've checked the ventilation system in those areas to see if there was any evidence at all of any mold back in the ventilation system behind the vents, and they cleaned, cleaned the vents coming into the rooms. There hasn't been any evidence of, of additional mold, with the exception, the only mold that's been found was in the, what are those called, Paul, those boxes? In the, where it's, the box, where you found the mold, where the drip pan is?
Oh, your fan compartment.
Your fan.
Lower compartment.
Lower compartment, okay, sorry. Non-mechanical, I guess. Anyway, there was some in there which had been treated, and that's still being reviewed as best, whether we need to replace some of that insulation, but that was the only place, where it was right there where the moisture was that it was found. So, those have all been cleaned and sanitized by the crew. As I said, Paul and his crew have gone through the first floor, main offices, deeds, treasurer's, clerk's office, and done some pretty heavy-duty cleaning, washing down the walls, replacing all the ceiling tiles. We cleaned the books in the deeds vault, of which not all were contaminated, just certain ones, based on the binding, had some mildew, but we cleaned and sanitized those, and basically just did a top-down cleaning, cleaned the woodwork and the window sills. So, in all of that, there was, there was some dirt and mold in some of the older ceiling tiles around the vents. That probably is not too surprising, but those have all been replaced, and overall, I think the staff has been fairly, has been happy with the results of that cleaning project. So, there's a schedule to continue to do that throughout all the rooms that are not included within the remediation bid. So, in order to keep costs reasonable, the things we can do in-house are the things we're trying to do. So, the remediation covers those areas where there was the greatest mold counts, just to make sure we do that right and get it done correctly and done well. Paul, can you think of anything else?
Paul, the company that installed the equipment has worked with you from the start on this to correct it, make sure it didn't happen again, correct?
And we're still, Commissioner Howard, we're still working through that process with that company. In fact, I plan on meeting with them again on Friday.
Thank you, Midge.
So, that is still, certainly, the, we're not concerned that it'll happen again, and we're just, we're working out some of it. And I do have a question for you, Midge, and I apologize, but correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned that the level of mold found in some areas of the courthouse, and I believe you mentioned the first floor, is no higher than what would be found outside. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, for the most part, on the first floor, most of the basement, and a good portion of the second floor, those spore counts were in the 100 level, which on a rainy day outside is, is lower than what you might find out, you know, in high humidity levels. So, they're, they're just low. And we have spoken with an industrial hygienist from the state. She agreed, there, that was not an issue. You know, the only high levels, as I mentioned, that she saw were really high were those two storage rooms. That doesn't mean that any individual might not have an allergic reaction, and you know you can't control the degree of response any individual might have to a certain situation, but, so that's why it needs to be taken care of, obviously, as best we can. But, you're, there, you just can't get away from it. There's going to be some mold spores inside, there just are. It's just, I don't know how you would ever not have that, you know, but, yeah.
In other words, and if this is not a fair statement, please let me know, but all of the individuals that went into Jan's office this month to vote would have been no more at risk of lung disease, at least by way of mold than someone walking down Main Street, not other than...
Yeah, that's correct. Usually, an allergic reaction takes some time to develop any kind of issue anyway, and so, yeah, it's not any worse than what you might find in your own home, a wet basement being outside, yeah.
And we met with the industrial hygienist from the state and explained to her what our course of action was. She basically said, "Fantastic, there's nothing that the state needs to intervene and do here, you're on the right course," and the meeting was over.
Right, and that's basically what her letter back said, too, so, yeah.
And I would add to the report, and I think you know this, but the safety of the general public as well as our employees is of the utmost importance to this organization, and that's across all facets. That's not just working conditions in our buildings, that's reliable equipment for public works employees, that's providing the sheriff's department with the equipment that they need to do their job well. So, certainly, that, that is, frankly, our utmost priority is to ensure the safety and well-being in our firms.
Absolutely.
And if we approve this bid... And if we approve this bid, there are options we have to make sure this company does the job that they've bid and make sure it's done right. Anything else on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the bid from Indoor Air Technologies Incorporated for the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the mold remediation project at the courthouse.
So move.
Second? I have a motion in a second, Jim.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddow?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Yes, I received an email from Richard Dyson earlier this week. He is requesting a joint meeting with you all and the city board. Bartlett and West would like to give an update regarding the status of where they're at on the industrial park, as well as the marketing services that they are offering. I do think that would be a good idea. The date that seems to work well for the city and Bartlett, and what they're proposing is December 14th. They, the city's volunteered to host it and provide lunch, and the time that they are recommending is 11:30 to 1:00.
We do have a commission meeting that day, right? That is a Wednesday. I have no problem with that. It'll work, work for you, Randy?
I'm okay.
Okay. Well, then I will let them know that we will be, that day works for us. I have a meeting tomorrow with John Cohen, as well as his attorney, to discuss the chamber contract for tourism services. That's something that has been worked on a little bit with me and the chamber's attorney, and we're gonna be tomorrow and work out a couple questions, and after we do that, I will probably bring it to you all to discuss with you and get your heat back on kind of where we're at. So know that that is on the horizon, and that will probably be as early as next week. With regard to the process for hiring the administrator, we have narrowed the applicants to six finalists. Currently, we're shooting for December 15th as the interview date. We're still tweaking some fine details in terms of, as you know, we would like them to meet with a couple of committees comprised of elected officials, county department heads, representatives from the city, the hospital, as well as the SCDC, which I'll be reaching out to James about that. We're optimistic that the 15th will work, and that will still keep us on a pretty good pace to have this accomplished in January.
Are you gonna, we gonna try to do all six interviews on one day?
Well, and there's, we could do it on one day, and certainly, I don't think that would be problematic. Some of it might depend on the six applicants, and if we can all, because several of them are coming from out of state, and if we can get them here on that day. I think it would be more efficient to do it that way, and I don't think because it's only six, we would have to compromise anything or squeeze anything that we are not, would be, some of that would depend on what the applicants can do, and HR was planning on reaching out to them today to start trying to set that up.
Yeah, because I would be very surprised if all six will accept the invitation, but...
That is all I have for you.
And that meeting on the 14th, that lunch meeting was going to be at City Hall?
Yeah, the city and their providing.
Yeah, okay.
So, and one other thing, Sheriff Richards wanted me to let you all know that he is at a training today, which is why he is not...
Larry, you have anything else?
Nothing, other than trying to commission a world meet on 15th.
James, anything?
I'd just like to remind you guys to stop and sign the election book before you leave today, so the official record is complete.
Okay, takes us, Commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
Yeah, I went to the area agency on aging, Elizabeth Maxwell gave a presentation on what they're doing, and she gave out an annual report, and she'll probably be in to talk to us, give everybody an annual report, too, here pretty soon. But also, Elizabeth said there's a position for another elected official, doesn't have to be a commissioner to be on the advisory board, if anybody wants to do that, then they can have one more elected official on that. They got the advisory board, and they got the policy board, and I'm on the policy board. They can have another commissioner or another elected official on that advisory board.
Maybe when we reorganize in January, we can look at that.
Yeah, if anyone wants to do it. That was about it, she just went over the annual report, and I think she'll be giving it to us here pretty soon.
Okay.
Then I went to coffee, had a cricket last Friday, and this Friday there's another coffee for sprint, so we're getting all the telephone people in there.
Sounds like it's going to be cold enough, the coffee will taste good, ain't it?
That's right.
Did a hospital board meeting since last we met, it's been a while, so, one of the things I'd mentioned we'd been talking about is maybe ironing out a process for appointments to that board, and hopefully that process could be used on any other nominations we do. In having conversations with them, we came up with a process that we thought would work, maybe a recommendation, if you would, and I sent that to Derek just yesterday, so he hasn't had time to digest it at all, but, and then just turned it over to his expertise to review, and then come to us and present something, so that's where we are with that. Hospital-wise, I can't think anything need to pass on, other than that.
And I'm like you, I can't remember the last time, but I would make comment on the conference I attended. One of the sessions I went to had to do with the railroad safety and railroad response and dealing with crossings, and with the one we have at Lane and the one in Wellsville for my district, quite a bit of information about even our road maintenance and what we can do and not do, and how we approach it, and when we should notify the train company so they can notify their engines that we're going to be working on areas close to those areas. Some of that information I'm going to share at the Lane City Council and at Wellsville City Council with those people, as well as Jim, and let him know, just to make sure, and I've got several cards, I can, so contact numbers and whatever, but, for example, one of the things was that if their train has to stop and block a crossing, how long they can block it while breaking the train up? But the other part was, if it sets, and I don't remember if this was BNSF or UP, but one of them was, if their train sets, then they're required, there are people to get off and walk the length of the train and back before they can move it again. And you're talking about a mile-long train, that's a 30-minute walk or more. So it's a big deal for them to have to stop or block something, they do not want to do that. So it was pretty informative and interesting, and again, I got some good contact numbers I hope that at least those people can use maybe in law enforcement or EMS or anything else, if we would have a problem with a crossing or getting access.
Same boat, the last, I think I can, I went to the conference also, the KC conference, and one of the sessions I attended that was fairly interesting was about the fire that came up out of Oklahoma into western Kansas, and how they handled that, and how the possibilities of that happening again are very likely with the dry conditions, a lot, didn't burn everything off, they said it just burned off one part of their area, and the other part of their area would be the same thing if it happened again and got into that area, so. They talked a lot about how they used volunteers and how they organized it, and I also attend another session on the future of 911. There was probably 50, 60 people in the session, and I'm guessing maybe two of us, not, no, I shouldn't say that right, maybe two others besides the speaker understood what he was talking about. It was, it was, they were going over everybody's head, but anyway, so that's the last thing I can think of that I've done was the conference. Have a, enter into executive session for a matter of attorney-client privilege for 45 minutes with counsel slash administrator and the board. Does anybody want a break before we do this?
Please.
Okay, we'll look at going into executive session at 25 till 10 for 45 minutes. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, we'll be out of executive session at 10:20, no action taken. With that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? We're adjourned.